Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call to order the Newburgh City Council Business Session for June 4, 2018. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor, all present duly noted with the exception of Council President Bacon and Counselor Matt Murray, who are excused.
Thank you. Would you please rise for a pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a city manager's report, please?
Mr. Mayor and counsel and staff, Johan and your city manager.
May I have attention, please, in the audience? Thank you.
So I'll just cover some of the notes that have been emailed earlier in the day to you and to the press, just about what's been going on for the last two weeks. Today Doug Rucks, our Community Development Director, was able to send out the request for expressions of interest on the Butler property. So this is going to almost a dozen people who have expressed some interest in trying to buy that property and develop it. So you have a copy of it, you can look through. That also becomes the basis of brochures for us of other commercial opportunities in the downtown. So they'll go through a process until August 15th and then come back to council where you'll see whoever turns in a proposal to develop, buy it and develop that property September 17th. Also met this last week with the McMinnville city manager and what this was about is looking at some common issues and a couple that we really share with McMinnville that we're working on, city-county relations, emergency preparedness, much like the bags you have in front of us, but also about dealing with affordable housing and homelessness. And so they have some proposals that'll come back for your consideration after it's gone through our Housing Affordability Group of challenging the council or the county commission to also be a partner with the two cities and also with what's going on in Carlton to try to deal with maybe some camping, maybe some areas for affordable housing. And so that's a little bit different of bringing the county in. Also worked with two different commercial realtors and this is looking at commercial opportunities in our downtown and primarily on empty lots that we have for infill. The Butler is, you know, one that the city owns and will help develop, but there's half a dozen other infill properties and so fitting with what our comprehensive plan, our downtown plan, talks about mixed use and having commercial on the bottom floor and housing, this was now to get the private sector, the realtors energized and say, hey, we'll connect you with the property owners and what the city can do, how it can help with development to go through. So we're hopeful that something comes out of that. Again Doug and community development have been monitoring the potential sale of the West Rock property with different people that have been interested in it and there's still a lot of white noise out there about there's activity, but we have, Doug is our point person for that and just staying completely engaged with the brokers, West Rock and any potential buyers. So we hope that sometime very, very soon, something will happen out of that. Attended, as did the majority of the council, and then presented for the employee breakfast this year. You may comment, you know, like during your council business, but I think we're genuinely pleased with both the number of people and the reception for that and having a chance where we can say thank you to kind of this whole group of some amazing employees. The city attorney has continued the discussions on the purchase and sale agreement over the animal shelter and basically the issue that's being worked on now is we didn't include some of the land that they hoped to get in our appraisal. So now it's talking back and forth about an acceptable price for both of the parties. Also spent some time the last couple of weeks working on downtown transit and going from like targeting particular parcels in the downtown, but looking at maybe turning some half streets into transit streets. So looking at that, and this is in advance of the county spending some money for feasibility of the downtown transit for here. Again, busy week, a lot of things coming in front. We had the Riverfront, first Riverfront planning meeting that will be really a year-long or 18-month process to just deal with all of the people coming in and then Doug, if we get an opportunity, can talk about now the Springbrook development with the new owners coming in are coming in front of the planning commission. So we'll even see, you know, bigger activity from that. Mr. Mayor?
Any questions or comments for the city manager? None appearing. You gave me a good segue there. Thank you, appreciate it. The bags before you that you see laying here on the table, Jay, do you want to give us a real quick and dirty, let the council know what those are and what's going on?
Good evening, Mayor Andrews and Counsel. Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. Before you this evening is what was given to every city employee at our breakfast last week and they're called go-bags and the intent of the go-bag is to put prescription medications, a phone contact list, maybe a small emergency water filter, a little bit of food, change of clothing, maybe, that sort of thing. You're going to fill that bag up pretty quick, but it's something when all heck breaks loose, it's the first thing you think of hopefully and you grab. You should probably have one in the back of your car also. Those happen to be waterproof. You can get those on Amazon. I think we paid, what, $19 apiece for them, Joe? So they're cheap price. If you roll down the top a couple of times and then click it together, it's pretty waterproof. And then there's also backpack straps in there, so you can also use it as a backpack. So that's sort of a start hopefully to your at-home emergency kit, which everyone needs to be thinking about. There's links on the city's website of what you should have in those sorts of bags and then what you should have at your house, in your garage and that sort of thing. And this is all being prompted, you know, by the Cascadia Subduction Zone and the potential of a large seismic event. We don't know when, but there is a large potential per the latest research we've done. Anyways, it's potential that we could have some significant shaking for up to four minutes and our world, sort of the way we know it as now, is going to be significantly changed. So that's it. If you have any questions, you can give me a call or Jill Dorell, my assistant, assistant, and we can help you with things. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it. Any questions for Jay and the council? None? Then I believe we're going to move to council appointments and this is to look at the, ratify my appointment of Capri Wheaton to the Planning Commission and Cooper Fochi, I think, or Fochet to the Traffic Safety Commission. These are student commissioners and it'll be terms for terms of June 2018 through May of 2019. And with that, then I am going to move that you consent to my appointment of these student commissioners. It has been moved and seconded to ratify the mayor's appointment of student commissioners for traffic safety and the Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion?
No.
No, I don't know. Oh, and you are? Thank you, Caprice. Any questions? No further discussion, the question's been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing, the motion carries. Thank you, Caprice. Appreciate it, your willingness to serve with us on the traffic safety, you're going to be on the traffic safety, no, you're on the Planning Commission and
Good luck.
It's going to be a learning experience and be willing to participate. They will appreciate it, they really will. I think you'll enjoy it. Thank you for being here. And with that, then I'm going to move to the area of public comments and this is a time on the agenda where individuals may provide, have an opportunity to address the council on matters relevant to the city and regarding items on the consent calendar, but not other items that are specific to council deliberation. We'll hear about that later. This section of the agenda is for a maximum of 30 minutes and may be extended. I don't think we'll need to do that. And I'd like to remind all citizens that who've signed up to speak that each speaker will have five minutes to address the council. Also, collective comments by an individual under the section will be limited to five minutes. With that, I invite individuals to come to the table, turn on the mic, there's a silver button on the right-hand side, give us your name and then speak to the council on the issue that you would like to have us hear about. And the first one I'm going to call on is a, is it Brian Bergman, is that correct? There you go.
Thank you. My name is Brian Bergman. I'm a resident of Tigard, Oregon, born and raised in Portland, Oregon. I'm a minority owner in Oasis Cannabis on Villa Road. We've been open for almost two years. We enjoy being part of the community. We think that we help the people in the city of Newburgh and I just am here to speak to extend our hours. Right now, we're open from nine to eight and we'd like to be open at least until 10 As far as I know, we've had no incidents whatsoever, except for, you know, a false alarm going off when we can't shut the alarm off when we come in in the morning, but aside from that, there's been no incidences and I know that our customers really do enjoy having us there. We do have 200 signatures that we've gathered in support of our extending the hours and I know that if we haven't submitted them already, that we'll get them to the proper place by tomorrow. And that's basically it. Does anybody have any questions for me?
That's beef to ask of you.
Where, I
My apology on this one, Brian, really you should have come in for that particular subject area. So we'll take that and then if there are further questions, we may call on you
Okay.
When we come up to that. I did not understand what you meant when you were talking about dispensary hours. I was thinking of something completely different. So I've, really, you should be on a different item on the agenda, but thank you anyway for being here and sharing your comments with us.
Okay, no problem.
We'll call on you later
Okay.
If we need to. Thank you. Mr. Mike Ragsdale, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Mike Ragsdale, the Executive Director of the Newburgh Downtown Coalition. With me is Margaret Talt. I'll introduce Margaret a little bit further in just a moment. The reason we're here before you tonight is to share with you a product that we just completed and we wanted you guys to know about it fully. It's a brochure depicting the public art that's available in Newburgh. Now I will admit that probably we missed one or two, so if you see some public art that isn't in here, let me know and we'll get it in the next edition. This came about because Margaret Talt, who's here with me tonight and a resident of Newburgh, approached us some time ago and indicated that when she was in Fremont, she had worked with a group of citizens that had put together a brochure like this for that community. And we got to talking and decided that it would be an excellent idea for the city of Newburgh, for the community of Newburgh. And we, I asked Margaret to go ahead and start to work on it. Margaret disappeared for a while and then she came back later with a complete file of Word documents and JPGs for this brochure. And we took it from there. We got Haley Delly and Casey Sonier, Sonier, who's in my office, worked to do a lot of the graphics. We then turned it over to Allegra and they took the graphics a little bit further and the result is we have now a brochure for anybody that shows the public art that we're aware of in the city of Newburgh. So we present you your copies and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions that you have for Mr. Ragsdale and/or for the photographer, Counselor McKinney?
We want to thank you, Sonia, for the work that you've done on behalf of the citizens of Newburgh and the preparations. I've seen you around from time to time at different meetings and I remember that art was one of the conversations that you had with some counselors when we've had some gatherings at the Cultural Center. And again, Mike, I'm always pleased to hear about the progress that you're making there. I hope someday I'll see one of these that's twice or three times as big.
Any other comments? None? Thank you for your efforts, both of you, and I found it fascinating going through it. I got an earlier peek at it, thanks to Mr. Ragsdale, and there's some fascinating activity there and I'm looking that we have more coming up. Thank you both, but especially our photographer for the work that's been done. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
With that, we will move to the consent calendar. Pleasure to the council. Counselor Corey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar, approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion?
I had one thing, real fast.
You may.
I just want to really congratulate staff. You know, the price we got on those police vehicles is smoking hot, so excellent work for that amount of money to get three vehicles. I was very impressed, so I just wanted to say, tip the hat.
Do I have a second? Oh, you did second, I'm sorry. Okay. Is there any further discussion? The questions have been called for. There being no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing, the consent calendar is adopted. Five, zero, two. We now move into the area of public hearings and we have a series of administrative hearings this evening. And the first one will be a public hearing and approval for state revenue sharing for the fiscal year 2018, 2019. And as we move into the administrative hearing, I'm calling for any abstentions or conflicts of interest for council members present. None appearing. With that, Mr. Zick?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel, thank you. Tonight's public hearing regarding state revenue sharing funds is an annual requirement that the city has in order to receive roughly about $2.3 million in the general fund and street fund. So the city did, one of the requirements is that the city have a public hearing before the Budget Committee regarding the possible uses of state shared revenues and the city performed that requirement on April 24, 2018. And then the second requirement is that the city hold a public hearing for proposed uses of that revenue and that is what is happening this evening. The city uses these funds in the general fund to support general operations and as well as the street fund toward street projects, the gas tax. There are other state shared revenues that the city receives that are not covered by this resolution that the city performs other requirements in order to receive. So, for example, the state marijuana tax, there's a different certification process as well as the 911 funds. So there are two resolutions in the pack at this evening. One is to certify that the city desires to receive these funds. The second resolution is certification for required of cities that are in counties with a population of greater than 100,000 and that happens to be Yamhill County, just over the threshold of the last several years. We have to certify that we provide one of seven, excuse me, four of seven different municipal services. We happen to provide all of the required services with the exception of the fire service, which will be provided by TVFNR in 1819. So police services, street construction, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, planning and zoning and subdivision, as well as water utility services. So the evening, as well as the Budget Committee recommending approval, staff is requesting that you approve resolutions 3465 and 3466 regarding state shared revenues.
Any questions for staff at this time? None appearing, then I will move into the area of public testimony. I have nobody signed up to provide any oral testimony. Do we have anything we've received from outside in written communications?
We have not received any written communications on this item.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So I'm going to open and close the public testimony portion and again, I would need your closing remarks and your recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. In closing, I recommended the council approve Resolution 3465 and 3466 approving the city's certification to receive state shared revenues.
Any further questions that you have for staff at this time? With that, we will close the public hearing, go into deliberations and we will start with Resolution 2018-3465. This is a resolution declaring the city of Newburgh's election to receive revenues through the state revenue sharing program. Pleasure to the council. Counselor McKinney?
Urges the adoption of Resolution Number 2018-3465. Does it need to be read by title only?
No, it's a resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution.
It's been seconded, Corey? To adopt Resolution 2018-3465. Is there any further discussion?
Call for the question.
There being no further discussion, the question's been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing, the resolution is adopted. To Resolution 2018-3466, this is a resolution certifying the provisions of mutual services by the city of Newburgh for the purposes of participation in the state revenue sharing program. This is the one that Mr. Zick described to you. Pleasure to the council. Counselor Corey?
And Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2018-3466.
It's seconded, Johnson? To adopt Resolution 2018-3466. Is there any further discussion? The question's been called for. I hear no request for further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing, the resolution is adopted. And with that, we will now move to this is again, will be an administrative hearing. And this is dealing with the 2018, 2019 city budget and approval of recommended changes before adopting the budget on June 18, 2018. Again, I call for any abstentions or conflicts of interest. None appearing. Mr. Zick?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Just a brief highlight on the staff report, the Budget Committee met on April 17, 24th and May 1st, deliberated on the budget as presented by the budget officer and they approved that budget without changes. Staff is requesting one change at this time in the city hall fee fund. We did, in order to move the ending fund balance from the quote "unappropriate ending fund balance" category and appropriate that so that those funds can be refunded. As described in the staff report, there was an understanding that the fee had been overcollected and so thus needs to be returned to the original payers and in order to do that, we have to have that inappropriate budget category. And that was, that research was just concluded after the budget had been approved by the Budget Committee. So in order to do that, staff is, well, staff's requesting that the council make a motion to approve those changes and then budget law requires that we go back out and republish the financial summary and post for a second hearing, which would be at your next meeting on June 18.
Any questions for staff at this time? Counselor McKinney?
Does this document refer to any process or recommendations for process on the returning of these funds?
This document does not go into the specifics. We are continuing to gather that, do the research on the data for the last several years that that fee was collected and so we will, we're still in the research phase and we'll get back to that process here shortly.
Any other questions for staff at this time? I have nobody signed up to provide any oral testimony on this one. Have we received any written communications?
We have not received any written communications on this item.
I will open and close the testimony portion of the hearing and I will look to staff to give us our closing remarks and
Thank you, Mayor. The recommendation for this evening in this regard is to have the council approve a motion as stated in the request for council action that staff republish a new public hearing notice and financial summary in the Newburgh Graphic to reflect the recommended changes and take action to adopt the 1819 budget at the June 18, 2018 city council meeting.
Any further questions for staff? With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, we'll go into deliberations. You have before you a motion, a request for a motion to approve the recommended changes before adopting the budget on June 18. The motion, as you heard, is for the staff to republish a new public hearing notice and financial summary in the Newburgh Graphic to reflect the recommended changes and take action to adopt the 2018-19 budget at June 18, 2018 city council meeting. So I hear a motion?
So moved.
It has been so moved. It has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? There being no further discussion, the question's been called for. You heard the motion to adopt. Is there any, there's nothing, no further questions, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. And with that, we have a final administrative hearing. This one is Resolution 2018-3469 and it's a request for approval of supplemental budget number two for the fiscal year 2017-18 as described in Exhibit A, the creation of new governmental capital projects fund and the closure of the EMS fund. I need to call for any abstentions or conflicts of interest. None appearing. Mr. Zick?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Tonight's request for supplemental budget number two is primarily the result of minor adjustments, operations and the major driver in this is the Public Safety Communications Upgrade Project being recognized in a new fund. That fund was presented in the approved budget and the reason for that was that originally that was budgeted in the general fund, essentially combining both operations and a capital project. And the nature of that funding of that project changed from our original plan back about a year ago. And in March, we essentially got funding for the whole project for 3.1 million rather than combining that with operations and causing confusion about the ending fund balance. It was clear to create a separate fund called the Governmental Capital Projects Fund in which the funds that were unspent in this year would automatically be rolled over to the future fiscal years. This is a multi-year project, Public Safety Communications Upgrade and so creation of this fund was the desirable way to go. So that counts for essentially, rather than the original appropriation of 2.2 million, it's now fully appropriated 3.1. That's the majority of the change to the budget as far as dollars. That's the majority of the change to the budget, as far as dollars. Closure of the EMS fund is primarily a result of the culmination of the two-year IGA, of the dating period with TBFNR, and now the annexation becoming effective July 1, 2018. EMS fund is no longer going to be receiving funds. There will be some, a trickle of old receivables from the ambulance billing that essentially stopped two years ago, but we still continue to get old revenue. It's about $12,000 left, and we're asking that we close down that fund and any additional funds just be recognized in the general fund. So, those are the highlights of the supplemental budget, and that's my staff report.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Zick? I have one, and sometimes the tongue is faster than the finger, and certainly faster than the mind. On the Public Safety Fund, and I'm looking at the initial write-up. Communication off, and I'm reading it, trying to read it again to see if I missed something. The communications officers funded through the Public Safety Fee began in fiscal year 1718, with a higher fund balance and will also receive higher-than-anticipated revenue. Then the part that is, that I need clarification on is the additional revenue will be appropriated towards routine operational expenditures. And I don't think that the council adopted that fee to be used for routine operational expenditures. And that's the question I have. Can you clarify that for me?
Yes, yes, I can, thank you. That fund recognizes the revenue from the two different-
I'm not talking about the fund, I'm talking about the dollars, the actual dollars.
Right, right. The dollars are going towards the two communications officers' salaries that are recognized in that fund. So, there are, those two, the variable really is overtime, and so, as a result of just the operational staff turnover, et cetera, that, the officers in that fund have had higher-than-anticipated expenses. So it's nothing outside of the scope of the public safety fee that was recognized. It's two officers, two dispatchers essentially, and they've had a little bit more expenses than anticipated.
Again, again, I'm not staying with you completely, unfortunately. Appropriated towards routine operational expenditures, what does that mean? What's a routine operational expenditure?
In this-
I know what I conceive it is, but what are you saying here?
In the course of doing the work that the dispatchers do, those that are assigned to this fund can be called upon to work longer than anticipated, more than anticipated through the course of working overtime, et cetera. So, maybe the definition of routine is, could be say this is a non-routine event?
Well, I was looking at operational expenditures. There's all kinds of operational expenditures associated with the, with the fund, and it, but you're, it is, it is not going to be used for other than to provide for these officers. Is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Thank you, that's the clarification that I needed on the record.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody else? No further questions, then we have the opportunity for public testimony. I have nobody signed up for any public testimony on this, or have received any outside communication?
I have not received any written or outside communications on this item.
I thank you, I appreciate that. With that, I'm going to open and close the testimony portion, and look to the staff for your final closing remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. The recommendation is to the approval of Resolution 2018-3469 to approve the supplemental budget number two for 2017-2018.
Thank you, close the hearing, we'll go into deliberations. You've heard the discussion. Pleasure the council. Counselor Corey?
Excuse me. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-3469.
And move and seconded, Johnson. To adopt Resolution 2018-3469, is there any further discussion? Thank you for your explanation. It will make my vote much easier. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
No further discussion? Do I hear a call for the question? Question's been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. With that, we moved into some new council business, and we have before us a resolution to initiate an amendment to the Newburgh Municipal Code Title 15 Development Code for the hours of operation of marijuana retail and dispensary facilities. Mr. Rux?
Thank you, Mayor. Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So on April 23 of this year, I was contacted by Anthony Stewart, who's a representative for Sherri Ralston, who operates the Western Oregon Dispensary. That request was to have council consider an amendment to the development code for the hours of operation for marijuana retail dispensary facilities. Currently, regulations council has adopted is that these type of facilities operate from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The request that would be considered if you initiate this by the Planning Commission and by the council would consider to extending those hours to possibly 9:00 p.m. or 10:00 p.m. This proposal does not require that you make a decision with a thumbs up or a thumbs down about those hours, it just initiates the process for staff to prepare material to go to the Planning Commission, Planning Commission to evaluate that proposal, prepare a recommendation that would then come back for another public hearing in front of the City Council. If the council chooses to initiate this, then Ms. Ralston would be required to submit the required application for a Type 4 review and the appropriate fee and paperwork and submit that. And then we would do the proper notification to DLCD 35 days, 35 days in advance of a public hearing, the first public hearing. And then, again, Planning Commission would formulate a recommendation that would come to you, and you would hold your public hearing and make a final determination on a proposal. So I have-
Any questions of staff at this time? Go ahead, Council McKenney.
Doug, in the RCA, under financial impact, it says no financial impact at this time. Would there be a financial impact at another time?
Possibly. To make this initial request, there's none. Financial impact could be in the future if council initiates this. There is an application fee to go through a Type 4 process. If there were extended hours of operation, there could be additional tax revenue that comes to the city from the sale of marijuana products. That's just the city portion. I can't right now speak to the state shared revenue piece, and there are confidentiality components to that as well.
Counselor Johnson?
Good evening, Mr. Rux. One of the things that I've been talking to staff quite a bit about is workload versus the goals that we've set out in our goal-setting session, I keep bringing this up at all the council meetings. And so I'm going to ask it of you, this isn't something that is listed out on our goals per se. You could argue economic development, I suppose, but my question to you is, from a staff time perspective, from a workload perspective, A, can you handle this, and B, what, what other things are you going to not have to do to do this?
Counselors, so Doug Rux again. Fortunately, we're fully staffed, so that's good. Our two new people are coming along very nicely. The amount of work, it is correct that it's not one of the council goals. As we've kind of identified in this initial RCA, there's two sections of the code in the land use, table use, that would require to be changed. So, it's not a huge amount of work to get it done. Candidly, looking at schedules today, given other things that are already have come in, this is something that might not get in front of the Planning Commission until August or September. Because we've got, we're doubling up on meetings every month with Planning Commission as we're going through this current wave of applications. And those other ones will come first before this one.
Any other questions for staff at this time? We have some people signed up that would like to talk to us, so, if you're interested.
So, a marijuana dispensary, is this still medical, that this is, they're talking, I know it's recreational, but are they doing medical dispenser?
Counselor Doug Rux again. So, things are transitioning. So when the marijuana programs actually started, we had, we had medical marijuana dispensaries. And then, then came the retail compor, component of that. So we got the retail, so we've got producers, processors, wholesalers, laboratories, retail operations. I think what my perception is, we're seeing a migration from the Oregon Health Authority, and those programs are all transitioning over to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. And so each legislative session, there's always a series of new laws and tweaks and adjustments that are occurring to the marijuana laws.
So it's not medical?
This would cover both recreational and medical.
So follow on?
Follow on.
So, do we have any, like, how late can Walgreens stay open if I wanted to get prescriptions filled?
I can't answer that here locally in Newburgh. I know I've gone to other Walgreens where it's 9:00 o'clock at night, or maybe after. There are some Walgreens that are open 24 hours a day in order to be able to fill prescriptions.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it's 10. There, 10. Okay, I'm just curious, since that is a medical place where you pick up things for your, say, pain and stuff like that, that would be something that I was interested in knowing.
And Counselor, you know, some of those kind of details are things that would be evaluated if council initiates this, is to look at other operations. We did this when we were creating the marijuana regulations locally, comparing it to other types of operations. We're not down at that level of detail yet. This is one, does the council want to initiate a development code amendment and have staff and an applicant work, bring stuff forward to Planning Commission and back to council?
Mr. Rux will yield the microphone, we have some people that would like to talk to us. Again, I remind the people as we go into this public comment that we'd like to have you keep your comments to a five-minute period. And I'm going to call on Sherri Ralston.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's nice to be here again, to see all you gentlemen.
Your name, please?
Sherri Ralston.
We do that because we're recording it.
I got it. And I own Western Oregon Dispensary, so we've been open for two and a half years now. And we are spearheading the change of hours of operation, as you will know. I was here a couple of months ago, and we discussed it, I brought it up as well. And, and along with my previous conversations, you know, we did do a little research, and all of the local towns around us also have extended hours beyond what we're allowed to be open. You know, we have not had any incidents, we don't put any extra drain on the police force right now. Our store is medical and recreational, so we do service both, and the medical part of our business is growing, and especially with the senior citizens. And that's a bright spot for us, our business. We take a lot of time with those customers so that they understand a little bit more about the products and they can select the right product. And, and we have consistent requests to stay open later. So, and I respectfully just also want to say, it's a little puzzling and frustrating that this process is so lengthy for such a minor extension of hours of operation. But I also respect that that's just the way it is. And so we will work with that on a new timeframe, and, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to come to what we are asking for, which is extended hours of operation. And that simply just comes from the expressions of the community and our customer base.
Thank you, Sherri. Any questions for Ms. Ralston? None appearing, thank you. Anthony Stewart, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, city staff, lady and gentleman. My name is Anthony Stewart. I am an attorney and representative of Western Oregon Dispensary, but I've also worked with some of the other local dispensaries here in town on some other matters before the city. I've not appeared before you in person, but I've had the opportunity and pleasure to work with Mr. Stone and some other members of the staff. So, prior to discussing this, just consider this my praising them for the professionalism despite sometimes the controversial nature of the subject matter. It's part of the Oregon Constitution, part of our laws, and I appreciate the professionalism with which the city has been receptive to any of our requests. With that in mind, just wanted to supplement what Sherri had to say and give you a little bit of background on the state law. The state law is very heavy on deference in a lot of places, and as it relates to the hours of operation, the state law allows up to 10:00 p.m. So statewide, as late as you can go is only ever going to be 10:00 p.m. And they give time, place, and manner deference to cities and local jurisdictions in order to both meet the local community's demands for economic development and allow them to poison themselves in a competitive posture in the event that one town felt it was necessary to close earlier, but other ones wanted to drive more sales. As has been said by Mr. Bergman and Ms. Ralston, and I believe Kwame may be speaking as well, there is, especially in the summertime season, whether it's alcohol or anything else, a lot of people on the recreational and medical side don't get to their weekend or evening preparatory errands until a little bit later in the days. We all tend to work a little bit longer when the sun's going, and this time of year is a pretty straightforward reminder that having a few extra hours, at least one or two extra hours, would provide a significant increase in the amount of foot traffic. It's more casual hours of the day where things are a little bit easier, and an extension of those hours would be very helpful. There are three dispensaries here in town, all of them have provided me information that has been shared with Mr. Rux, the Community Development Director, and all are very excited and happy to work with the council. If there's any questions throughout this process, I'm available and they will remain available. As it relates to the workload on the city staff, I appreciate Counselor Johnson's perspective on that. There are quite a few local nearby jurisdictions that have dealt with this matter and have either extended or have decided from the start to have a little bit later working hours with a number of different approaches to how that is managed by ordinance. I would be happy to share the information and research that I have had. By way of example, McMinnville is open till 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. Dundee defers to state law and allows up to 10:00 p.m. Sheridan, same thing, defers under state law and allows to 10:00 p.m. Tigard has enacted a 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. ordinance. Salem allows up to 10:00 p.m. King City is up to 9:00 p.m. Woodburn is 10:00 p.m., and Beaverton is 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. With Yamhill County having no explicit limitation, they defer to the local jurisdictions here. So there are a lot of local colleagues that would be able to assist both Mr. Stone, Mr. Rux, and any other persons on the, on the council that might have some questions on whether or not there's an increase in community safety concerns or whether there isn't. It's, it's been my experience as a professional that an extension like this has not and will not result in any major increase, if any increase whatsoever, in the resources that the city will have to expend in order to accommodate this change with a lot of upside from the tax revenue perspective. As was mentioned earlier, the first phase that's here for today is not an up or down yes or no substantive vote, this is simply to allow due process for some local businesses. This will require an application fee, and Mr. Rux could probably confirm it's around $2,400? Around $2,400, the dispensaries are prepared to immediately submit that upon your approval so that we can work with them. If there are questions, we, again, will be happy to come back, but we want to make this as transparent and easy as possible. I will remain available for the rest of the evening, and by email, Mr. Rux, Mr. Stone have my contact information, and I'm very grateful for your time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments for Mr. Stewart? None appearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Bergman, I didn't mean to cut you off earlier. I want to give you another chance. If there's anything further that you want to provide in the way of information, I invite you forward. We got you in the wrong queue to start with.
We have signatures here of about 200 people that want to see our hours extended as well. I definitely liked the comment the gentleman made there about the Walgreens, because Walgreens are in pretty much every city, and they provide prescription medication for people, and they too are open usually late. And that's the only thing we want, is the same fair treatment, so we can serve the public and the people that are looking for our products to help them in whichever way they need. Do I submit these to the register, or who should I submit these?
You may give them to the city recorder, please.
Okay, thank you. And does anyone have any questions for me?
That's me to ask. As a reminder.
Okay, well, I've, I just.
Counselor Eisen.
I'm just wondering if you're aware of, for the medical side, what are the kinds of uses that is prescribed? My understanding is that pain is one of the uses of medical marijuana, and sleep, apparently helping with the sleep. Is there any other things you're aware of that it's used for medically?
You know, we get a variety of people that come in, it can be senior citizens down to, you know, people that are in their twenties. And there's a variety of things, anxiety, sleep, pain. You know, if you, if you were in our store for one day, you would probably hear 20 different things, that are people are looking for something different than what they normally use, something different than prescription drugs like painkillers, like opiates or what, or whatnot. And I think the more research we do into cannabis, the better it's going to be for everybody, because we'll have more knowledge of, of how it can help people. So there's a variety of things that it can, it helps people with.
No further questions? Thank you. Appreciate your patience on that very much. Mr. Rux? Mr. Rux brings to us a resolution 2018-3476, which is a resolution initiating the activity to amend the code. We're making no further decision other than to thumbs up or thumbs down on going to a, initiating the process. So is there any further questions that you have of staff? Any closing remarks that you have, Mr. Rux?
Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution 2018-3476.
Pleasure to the council. Counselor Eisen?
I move that we adopt resolution 2018-3476, marijuana hours of operation, retail dispensaries to, and I would think, I just learned that the medical part of it runs till nine, but the retail runs to 10 at Walmart, so it could be either nine or 10. I would, I would move 10:00 PM.
So what is your, what is your motion, please?
Motion pass to, pass resolution 2018-3476, marijuana hours of operation, retail dispensaries till 10:00 PM.
No, we're not making that decision.
Oh, just pass the resolution then. As I stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second, just passing the resolution.
Thank you. All right.
There you go.
You've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? None appearing. Do I hear a call for the question? The question has been called for. The second is Corey. Did you get that? The question has been called for. All in favor of adopting resolution 2018-3476? Say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. None appearing. Motion carries. And with that, we have a resolution 2018-3484, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the DEQ Clean Water State Revolving Fund loans to reduce interest. Mr. Zuck?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This by far is the most exciting part of the evening. In the course of doing some business with our financial advisor this, earlier this year, to provide funding for the Public Safety Communications Upgrade Project, we looked at other opportunities to refund and restructure some debt. And at the time, there were, there were two opportunities that we considered looking at rolling into that, that debt structure for the Public Safety Project. However, two separate state entities, one being the Business Oregon, offered to refund, they went out and refunded the reuse water loan, and so they took that off our table for us to have to refund that debt. The second opportunity was the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, Oregon DEQ, they lent the city back in 2011 and 2014, combined amount of shortly over 21 million. At that time, I think it was actually more in the line of 22 to 24 million. And as we approached DEQ, rather than us giving them back their money and publicly bonding for that money, they would have rather of us kept our funds. And again, they have to use those funds for specific purposes, and if they don't use those, you know, they, they have to deal with that. So they would have rather of us kept our money, and they essentially offered us a really nice offering of a lower interest rate. They kept the process very streamlined, essentially what you have in, before you as an amendment to the two existing loans. It would take a new, a new loan number, and it would lower the interest rate down to 1.75. The, the estimated savings over the next 18 years is 1.5 million. Present value is about 1.3 million. But in a few pen strokes, we believe that we can do what we need to do to save the taxpayers' money, save the ratepayers' money, and make this a winning situation for the city. So in order to do that, we're requesting that you approve resolution that's presented to you this evening. I'm getting ahead of myself on the recommendation.
Thank you. I do have a question. Do other counselors have any questions to the staff? The, you're lowering the interest rate, but you are extending the term. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And lowering the interest rate, but, and extending the term, we still net out a saving of 1.5 million.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you. That's, I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes.
That even though we extended it and are paying for three more years, the net result for us is still a gain of 1.5 million. Okay. Any other questions or comments with the staff? You don't think, you think that's okay? Pleasure to the council. Resolution 2018-3484. Counselor McKinnon?
Urges the adoption of resolution 2018-3484.
Do I hear a second? Corey? Corey? It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 2018-3484. Is there any further discussion? The question's been called for. I hear no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. None appearing. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Zuck. We didn't have a call for it earlier, so I'm having a call for it now. Are there any items anybody wants to add? I have two items for council business. Is there anything that anybody wants to add to council business? Counselor Eisen?
I would just ask, I'd like to ask a question or two about the, the bag and emergencies.
All right. Just a moment. Anybody else? Okay. I'm going to start out here on this one. I just wanted to let you know, we did have the Special Olympics Oregon here with a regional track event on Sunday. Very good turnout. We had teams or organizations from Marion, Lynn, Lincoln, Yamhill, Lane, what are the counties? Did I miss get them all? It was regional. Very good turnout, and it is, it is a step that we are working on to, to have Newburgh become a, more of a focal site for future games for the Special Olympics. But I think it was very successful. The place was cleaned up sharp as a tick, by three o'clock in the afternoon, but they had a, as far as I know, a very successful event. The, we had volunteers that didn't get called on that would love to have volunteered, and there will be other events that they'll be looking at in addition to, to track events. And we have also, as a training activity, we have the LOC Regional Meetings. We had, the last meeting is going to be held in Sherwood this Friday at 4:00 PM at the, I believe it's at the police station in their community room. Is, is it the sixth? Is, is that Wednesday? The sixth? Okay, I'm sorry. Wednesday, the sixth. Well, it is the sixth. I got the right day. I got the right date, not the right day. And if there's anybody else who would, Counselor Johnson's going. I went to the one in Salem, and if there's anybody that has an opportunity that could do that on Wednesday, I'd encourage you to do it. And I believe it, it's at the police community on Wednesday, the sixth. Thank you. And Scott, you wanted to ask about the go-bag?
Yeah. The way we do that, this is what we get filled up and grab and go. But communication to this, I guess it's an other thing to do, and we just recently had that water emergency, so I need to ask Jay, what do you do to deal with water?
That didn't have anything to do with the bag. Go ahead. Jay, answer the question.
How much water do you need?
Yeah, there you go.
Mayor Andrews, Council. Jay Harris, Republic Works Director. So I'm going to take you back in time a few weeks. The city of Salem had a problem with their water supply system. They did some initial testing. They didn't say anything to the public. They wanted to retest it again. In the end, that was a mistake. It, it cost them some days. They could have notified the public a little earlier. If you watch the news, you've got that off the news. The problem they had was up in Detroit Lake, feeds the San Yam River, there's a blue-green algae outbreak, a little early in the year probably because the water's a little cooler, but it happens. So surface water obviously grows algae and such. With the algae production, this particular algae type, it produces some different toxins. They obviously got some of those into their water supply system. They were above legal levels. So the concern was, was the North San Yam River flows into the Willamette River. The Willamette River goes by where we get our water. And so then Wilsonville and Sherwood started jumping on with, you know, testing for potential toxins in their water. Found very minute amounts, which is probably be expected. The Willamette is flowing pretty good this time of year, right? This happens in water that doesn't move much, right? So, surface water. So our well field is a groundwater source. It's not a surface water source. It just happens to be located near the river, but we're not drawing from the river, which is a big distinction. We test for surface water influence in our well field. This is part of our normal activity. We do microscopic analysis. In 2017 was the last time we did it. We did it on well number nine. We do a well every few years, and there was no surface water indicators found in that analysis. So the surface water outbreaks, whether it's the blue algae, whether it's Giardia, I mean, there's just a host of things that you can get in surface water. We're not affected by those. Matter of fact, for years, people drank out of the well field with no chlorination. We just dropped a little bit of iron and sent it to everybody. So we got good water, got a good source. Now, we could, we have other problems though, right? I mean, any system's prone to failure, so I'll give you a few of those. Power going out, right? We could lose power out there. We got the generator in a well number six last spring, which is good news. We have a generator at the water treatment plant. Well six does up to about 2 million gallons a day, so we can pretty much keep the reservoirs full. We might have to tell people not to use as much water. Our winter days are two, two and a half million gallons, so we're looking pretty good there. We have two pipes across the river. One's on the bridge, one goes underneath the river. There's potential one or both of those could fail, and we've had one fail before, and luckily we switched over to the other one, so it's not unheard of. We also have a seismic event, which is really unknown, right? You don't know if the roads are going to be up and down all over the map and every water line's broke. Or I was down in Salinas, you know, during the '89 earthquake, and the roads went all over the map, but man, they all returned back to normal again, and the water lines are all still there, and there wasn't an issue. One of the larger problems perhaps with an earthquake would be losing the waterline bridge. That's one of our sources of water. And there's potential maybe our underground water line that goes under the river could also be compromised. Also, our well field contains, it's in a sand gravel stratum. It's likely that liquefaction is going to occur, and it's likely our wells could be sanded in, right? That they sand all the way to the top. That's not a good thing. So we have water purification systems that, we have 14 of them, which we just loaned to Salem, and we just bought three new ones because they were getting old. They're seven years old sort of thing. The batteries on them are starting to go bad. The battery technology nowadays better too. So we'll have 17 units. We could produce about 70,000 gallons a day of water from those units, if we're running them 24/7, which is near physically impossible. You'd need volunteers and all sorts of things. We're working with the faith-based community to assist us to run some water stations. I'm updating our emergency water response plan right now to include the faith-based. One of the lessons learned though is, we have treated water already. It's sitting in three reservoirs up on the hills. You know, we total 12 million gallons up there in three different reservoirs. So even if you have two or three million gallons left over, that will give us all a gallon of water a day for 100 days, if we just tap into our reservoirs and fill water trucks and bring the finished water in. So we're, we're pretty resilient there down the road. We need to work on a better plan though of instantaneous treated water. That was one of the problems Salem had, is, you know, they bring all these filtration kits and stuff, and it takes days, you know, hours if not days to get these sort of things going. We need to be a little quicker with that. So Russ Thomas and I are working on a plan to be able to fill a couple water trucks and within a couple hours have water stations running for people to fill up their water rather than a day or two sort of thing. And then have the filters and other things come online there. One other thing that we're going to be talking to you about this next year is resiliency of our water system. Engineering has a project to look at the seismic resiliency of the whole system, whether it's a simple connection at a reservoir. So you know, I said there's water available in these receptacles on the hill, but if I break between. I break between the valve that I can shut off and the reservoir, if it shears at that wall, those bets are off, right? So we're doing a resiliency study of the whole system, and we're doing a secondary source type of study, too. Where else can we get water rather than just relying? All of our eggs are in one basket in the well field, and it would be good over time to develop a second source for the city just for redundancy over time. And then probably to supplement our demand 30 years out, 50 years out, sort of depending on how fast we grow, we'll need a secondary source, you know, down the road a ways. It'd be advantageous to have that source come in at the north side of town, not the south side of town. That way we can feed water into the city from each way, you know, depending on which source was disrupted. So that's my update. Any questions?
Counselor McKinnon?
Jay, with the equipment that was lent to Salem and other communities, are there any consumables like filters or other things like that that they will be responsible to replace? Or are they just pretty much self-sufficient anyway?
Yeah, so the kits, the filters are made to run a week or so before you have to actually clean them. And you'll know you have to clean them because no water starts coming out. So typically, we'll take them back, look at them, clean the filters up, put them back in the kit. And then we also have spare filters at the shop. So we're pretty deep in parts for those. I'll talk to them, too, if they've broken things or, you know, wrecked a filter or that sort of thing, we'll talk to them. The cost of those is pretty minimal, though.
How many did we loan and when are they coming back?
We loaned 15 hurricane systems. To Marion County is who received them. They took, I know one went to the jail. Two or three of them went to the city of Salem. We expect them back in the next week, though.
Thank you. Counselor Essam?
Well, I just wanted to thank you guys for having those because it was, I know the mayor came up with this whole concept as far as getting ready for the earthquake. And I know that we've been working with the churches and this, but I know that your staff has been the one that came up with the idea that we should have these kind of units available. And it just goes to show you how nice it would be to have that when something comes down the road. So great job.
Yeah, the thanks goes to my predecessors because when I arrived here, these units were here. Russ Thomas, I think, was the driving force behind these purchases. Back then, they were about $2,000 a unit, so they, we spent under $30,000 for a significant asset. We've loaned them out several times now in my career. And, I mean, we might not ever use them, right? The day we need them, though, is an important time, right? And we need to be ready to be able to do some things with them. There's some other things that we still need to acquire. We have a grant out right now for the Emergency Operations Center supplies. With that is a storage container and some EOC food. Also, some water bladders are in that and some fuel bladders. I know the fuel bladders, Joe, do we have water bladders in there? I know we had fuel, we had water bladders also, yeah. So we'll need those for better distribution.
Thank you. Anything further? Come before the council. There's one action that I'm waiting for. Do I hear a second? We are adjourned. Thank you.